All right. There's no further discussion. Is there any further discussion? Seems like that was plenty. Item seven, Board Chair Person's Report. I do not have anything. There were no committee reports turned in for item eight. Item nine, consensus items. Item A, Personnel.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, present the Personnel Report for your consideration and approval this evening.
All right, you see the report as attached. Is there a motion to approve?
Nelson Bowyer, move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Reidenberg, can you make sure to identify yourself?
Bill Reidenberg, I second.
Thank you. Lisa Eastup?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reidenberg?
Aye.
Seven-nothing vote. Thank you. Item B, Budget Amendments. Ms. Small?
Thank you and good evening. I request the Board's approval of the amendments as presented for state, general, federal, capital outlay, and other restricted revenue funds. Would be glad to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from Ms. Small? Hearing nine, is there a motion to approve the budget amendments as attached?
Move to approve.
Mr. Reidenberg, can you please make sure to identify yourself?
Bill Reidenberg, and I move to approve.
Thank you.
Nelson Bowyer, second.
All right, there's a motion to second. Any discussion? Lisa Eastup?
Aye.
David Wortman? Mr. Wortman? Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reidenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, my computer froze. Aye.
Thank you so much, sir. It's the Chair. Thank you. Item 10, Old Business, School Calendars. Mr. Bowyer. Uh, Mrs., Dr. Smith. Okay.
Good evening, members of the Board. Bill, do you like my mask?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Members of the Board, good evening. A little more than six months ago, I believed I chaired my last Calendar Committee meeting for the 2020, 2021 school year, and I still wish that had been the case. Unfortunately, the world has changed considerably since then, and so too have our calendar laws. So in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the new laws passed by the Legislative Assembly, the Calendar Committee was forced to meet again to reconsider next year's calendar, to come up with a post-pandemic calendar, and to figure out how we could serve the needs of our students in a very different environment in 2020, 2021. And those needs are going to be quite large with a continuing health pandemic, a hardened achievement gap, and a group of students between Hurricane Florence and COVID-19 will have missed almost 25% of face-to-face instructional time over the past two years. So I believe that the calendars we are presenting to you all tonight will allow our teachers and administrators to be highly successful in meeting the needs of our students when they do in fact come back to us. And so we will begin with the traditional calendar. I'm just going to pull mine up. Do we have that to pull up? Ms. Adams? Oh, no, take your time. So I'm excited to offer this. This was the result of a lot of work and creativity on the part of Dr. Smith, on the part of Dr. Burns, and of the entire Calendar Committee, and it does offer some pretty big changes to our school calendar. I think we have come up with a calendar that meets the letter, spirit of the law, and allows us the increase in flexibility, and most importantly, benefits our students and faculty. And just to note, every calendar that we will discuss has a built-in calendar flexibility of about four to six days. So for the traditional calendar, our students will return to school on August 4th. We have our Christmas break starting on December 21st, ending on January the 4th. You can see five remote learning days. Those are required by the new calendar law. We have to have five remote learning days in our calendar, and we have positioned those on January 4th, January 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. And this calendar allows us to end our first semester before Christmas break. Our second semester will begin on the 4th of January when we return to school, and the second semester ends on May 31st. So that will allow us, what we were looking to do last year, which was to align the community college and year-round calendar, or I'm sorry, traditional calendars, and I think it will definitely be a benefit to our students. Are there any questions about the calendar, the traditional calendar? If not, I would ask Dr. Burns or Ms. Stagner, should we vote on these one at a time, or should we vote in bulk?
I do have, I do have a question, if you don't mind, Mr. Bowyer.
Please.
So we're talking about the traditional calendar, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and when did you say the first day was?
First day, I'm sorry, did I say August 4th?
Fourth, yeah.
First day is August 17th, and that date is locked in by the law.
Yeah, and that's fine. And then everything else was for the traditional calendar. I was just a little bit confused, but I do-
My apologies.
No worries, I just wanted to clarify what you were, what you were saying. I do have a couple of questions and a couple items. I do think that it's kind of ironic that the discussion that we had about the calendar and potentially going to a calendar that looks very similar to the Brunswick County calendar, and well, that's what we kind of ended up with. I mean, you know, it was, actually, it's exactly what we ended up with. My question, and I think everyone is, as we talked about before when we originally did this six months ago, I think the business community was supportive of starting then. And again, we have to start by statute. But I think the Calendar Committee has done a good job in ending the semester before Christmas. I think that's something we've always talked about. I think we've done a good job in ending our school year before Memorial Day. I think, again, that's something that we've talked about, and I think that's great. My only question is, is these five remote learning days, and again, I'm going to have to get Ms. Stagner's opinion on this, but the reading of the statute does not require five remote learning days. I think it, my reading of the statute says that you can have up to five remote learning days. So if that is the reading of the statute, or if that is the meaning of the statute, why, why not just give the kids five more days of learning instead of having a three-week, a three-week Christmas break? Because that's one of the things I've heard from people, is, you know, three weeks is a long time. So, Stagner-
I can, I can let Ms. Stagner speak to the calendar law. I can tell you that first, those five days are not Christmas break. Those are remote learning days, and Ms. Stagner was in on those Calendar Committee meetings, and I believe unless she's, she has a different opinion now, I believe she agrees with the reading that these are required. These five remote learning days are required by the statute. But those days allow us an opportunity to do things like credit recovery, grade recovery. They allow us to offer extra assistance to students who may need it. This calendar really allows us a chance to pivot from A to B to C as necessary. With regards to the Brunswick County model, what we were trying to do last year would no longer be possible given the calendar laws. And as you said, there's been so many changes. The needs of the business community weigh a bit more heavily on me as I sit here with a mask over my face than they may have six months ago. But Ms. Stagner, if you could speak to the remote learning days?
Yes, I am trying to pull up the statute right now. My, let me see.
I actually, I actually did pull up the statute, and again, I'm trying to do that as well. I pulled it up this afternoon, and I was fairly confident it said up to five remote learning days.
I believe it mandates five remote learning days. I'm going to, all right, so the law requires 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction that include five remote instruction days. So I, I read that to mean it's mandatory to have five remote instruction days. And then in addition to that, there are five additional days that are those first five days of the year. To come up with 185 plus five, or 1,025 hours plus five days.
What's the, is it 740, is that right?
It's-
Senate Bill 740?
704.
704, sorry.
Session Law 2020-3, Senate Bill 704.
Got it.
And this is Section 2.11B, School Calendar, and then subsection 1A.
And I'm pulling it up as we talk, because I, maybe I was confused about the section that I was reading. I'll-
It does say that the five remote instruction days may be scheduled in the discretion of the school unit, but it, it doesn't say that they're discretionary.
Okay, let me find out what I was reading. And that, and that, if you believe that they are required, then I, then I understand that. If, however, if they aren't, if they're not acquired, I think we have the opportunity to have, you know, all the students back, because whereas remote instruction is good, for some students, I don't think it's benef, it was beneficial to all students. I mean, I know that there were classes that, you know, I have a child in school, and, you know, he had 17 kids in his class, and they would have Zoom calls, and there was only three children that were participating in it. So, and from what I've heard, that was very consistent with a, with a lot of classes. Maybe not that low, but there was, there was a, you know, a lot of kids were not participating. So it was just my feeling that if they're not required, then let's try to get those kids back in school, especially given the fact that, that they've missed so much school this year, and, you know, that was my reasoning.
So I would agree with you, and part of the design of this calendar is to allow, to give our teachers the tools in their toolbox to really improve what they already do vis a vis remote learning, because it was a challenge, and it was a triage. And we have the professional development flexibility built into this calendar to improve that remote instruction. And we all know here, it's not a matter of if we have to go back to that, it's a matter of when. I mean, we, you know, we have the Atlantic hurricane season firing up already. So I feel like this, this calendar is in the long-term and short-term interests of our students.
Ms. Stagner, do we need to vote on these calendars one by one?
It is, at the pleasure of the Board, I might suggest that Mr. Bill, you review all of the calendars, and then if there's a motion to approve them all together, or if there is some desire to vote on them one at one, at that point, you can make individual motions.
Very good.
Okay, so next, our year-round calendar. These are for our modified year-round schools of Cottington and Eaton. There was a lot of discussion with these modified year-rounds. The previous calendars adopted by the Board would have started our children back in those schools on July 15th, and there was concern that the start date would be too early, given all the uncertainties surrounding the pandemic and the guidance that Dr. Burns mentioned earlier from DPI and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. So to that end, we engaged our Cottington and Eaton families and staff via a virtual town hall, and that town hall resulted in the drafting of three separate calendars. Tonight, we are recommending Draft B. We surveyed our students after, or we surveyed our families after that town hall, and we asked them which option, what about each option worked well for them, and we blended all of that together to come up with the calendar that we are presenting this evening. As you can see, the August 4th start date is what Calendar B recommends. The intercessions in this year-round calendar are shorter to accommodate the change in timing, but our December and spring breaks match up perfectly, which was something that both Cottington and Eaton families were adamant about. They really wanted to see that. It does have a very long period in between the January break and the break during the spring in April, but it was something that they wanted to see. So we did put that in there. With this calendar, schools will end on, let's see, I believe it is the 27th. So, no, I'm sorry, it's the 10th, the 10th of June. So the year-round calendar ends on the 10th of June, and then making sure that these calendar, or these schools stayed on a modified year-round track will allow them to adjust their start date next year.
What's the difference between what I'm looking at and last year?
Well, these calendars were passed last year. This is just the revision. Again, we did not feel that there was an appetite from the Cottington and Eaton communities to start on the 15th, given the safety concerns.
And that's it?
This essentially moves their calendar back to a start date of August 4th and makes changes that result from that changed start date. And yes, that's about it. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. And Option B, the additional remote learning days are also scheduled for the 4th, 6th, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th of January.
So, so let me ask you, how much different is this calendar going to be from the calendar from last year?
For last year's year-round schools?
For Cottington, yeah.
It will be different by a factor of about three, four weeks, three weeks. And the intercessions will be shorter as well because of that late start. And the five additional remote learning days. Those five additional days are required for all of our schools. So the modified year-rounds, the restarts, they're all required to have those five remote learning days, so. Are there any questions about our year-round calendar?
I, I, I don't understand. I just, I need you to explain it to me.
Okay.
They are going to, they're going to start up in August.
Yes, that's correct.
And their, their, their schedule will be just like it has been, it's just going to start later? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. And any major changes, anything that's just really different from what they've been doing?
No, like I said, the intercessions are a bit shorter, and they have those five remote learning days, and that's about it. That's, everything else is, is the same. It's just timing.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Bowyer, and I get, and I get, hey?
No, go, please.
Is there any time that's put up kind of at the end of the year for catch-up? Because I think that's what you use, you're using the third week of Christmas for, is that correct?
Yes. The third week of Christmas, that, those are not third week of Christmas, because it is not a break. Our students are in school. It's just remote learning for the 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th.
I mean, because as I'm reading the statute, it says remote, and I assume remote learning and remote instruction days are the same, is that correct?
Yes.
Remote instruction days may be scheduled for use as teacher workdays, including a teacher workday on which teachers may take accumulated vacation leave. Local school administrative units may, in their discretion, schedule remote instruction days as teacher workdays to facilitate completion of the first semester course exams prior to the winter holiday. So with that understanding, again, Ms. Stagner, correct me if I'm reading the statute wrong, or misinterpreting the statute, could we not have that third week, have kids go back that third week, and then add a week after Memorial Day? This way, all the kids would be able to go to school more, and then you would have those remote learning days as teacher workdays after Memorial Day, and you could use those for some grade recovery like that. And I think then we're actually maximizing the amount of time that we can actually have our students in school. Again, if I'm misreading the statute or misinterpreting the statute, please let me know.
Well, I'm not exactly sure I understand your question. If you are looking at Section 2D.
Yes.
If you look, go up to Section 1A, that's where it says the 1,025 hours that include five remote instruction days. So the five remote instruction days are required, where they are, where they are placed in the calendar is within the discretion of the district. And they, they can be, a teacher workday can be scheduled for a remote learning day. There has to be lesson, there have to be lessons prepared. It's asynchronous learning in that case, where the teachers are not doing live instruction. They've prepared instruction ahead of time for the students. So where they're placed on the calendar, you know, this was the recommendation of the Calendar Committee.
And again, I'd add, there were a lot of different options discussed. There were, there were options discussed that had those remote learning days staggered and placed at different points. The parents of Cottington, the parents of Eaton, the faculty of both of those schools recommended, you know, overwhelmingly to have those days placed where they are currently placed.
Again, I'm, I'm speaking more in line with the traditional schools than the non-traditional. And I, and I appreciate the discussion that y'all had, the Calendar Committee. I'm just asking the question of, if we can get the kids in school more, I think that that's, that's important. And instead of having the three weeks, two weeks, that's all I'm saying. I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Bowyer.
Yeah, again, I would just say, you know, I feel like this quality, this calendar speaks to quality. I feel like the quality of the instruction that we can offer, the opportunities that are presented with credit recovery and grade recovery at the end of that semester before the start of the second, I feel like that is a trade-off worth making, and, and that was why the committee went the way it did.
No, and I understand that. I'm just, the other kids aren't, aren't getting that same instruction, but I appreciate where you're coming from.
Just, I mean, all students will be receiving instruction during the remote instruction days. That's, that's required. It may be customized, or the, you know, what, what exactly is provided, but all students will be learning during those days.
Well, and I know we say that, but, and I appreciate that that is the intent, but I think that, you know, obviously, we're in tough circumstances with having to close school in March, but there were a lot of students that were not participating, so, or as much as other students. So my hope was that if we could get them in school, I think we all agree that being in school is much better than having remote learning. So that's all I was trying to say, is if there was a way to use those remote learnings times, you know, staggered about as teacher workdays, let's try to maximize the time, especially this year, maximize the time that our kids are in school, because I understand they're going to be given a remote lesson plan, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to, they're going to do it. And that was my, that was my thought.
All right, well, I will continue with the presentation of the Restart Year-Round Calendar. Bear in mind, these schools have calendar flexibility built in, thanks to their restart designations. We faced the same issues with the restart starting date, the 15th, as we did with the modified year-rounds, and we had the same virtual town hall, and there was wide consensus at that town hall for a August 4th start date. And so that is what you see here with Restart Year-Round Calendar Draft 1. Again, the intercessions are shorter. I will point out that in the restart draft, you have the remote learning days placed in the middle of the week, and that's for good reason. There was some debate about that. But the, you know, the school administrators, the teachers felt that placing those days in the middle of the week on a Wednesday would allow for, you know, preparation before the students begin remote learning, and then a reinforcement at the end of the week when they return. So that is the reason for those placements. Okay, first date, August 4th. You see the Christmas break lines up beginning on December 21st. There is a remote learning day scheduled for the 4th of January. That is the only one that is not in the middle of the week. The spring break lines up April 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th with our traditional schools. And students on this calendar will have their last day of instruction on June the 10th, 2021, a date I am sure we are already looking forward to. If there are any questions about that calendar? Okay. The rest of these should be somewhat easier. Let's see, we'll begin with Ibis. Isaac Bear Early College High School. This is pretty straightforward. They do have, as you'll see there, thank you, they do have their remote learning days scheduled on Fridays, and they chose a calendar that closely aligns with the university system. Their first day is August 4th, and their last day is May 19th. If you look at the WEX and CTEC calendar, it is similar in that they have adopted a calendar that aligns closely to the Community College system. Their first day is August 6th. Their remote learning days are spread out on five separate Fridays in August, September, October, February, and April, and their last day of instruction is Friday, May 21st. And then with our Freeman Year-Round, our Restart Year-Round, and our Pre-K calendars, they have opted for calendars that align with the traditional schedule and with the Pre-K schedule, or with the restart schedule, excuse me. The first day for our year-round Pre-K is the 13th of August. Again, you see the remote learning days. I'm sure you guys can imagine, those get pretty creative with youngsters. The December break, the Christmas break, runs up until the 4th. The 4th is a remote learning day, and they match up pretty closely, with some exceptions, to the restart calendar. The last day for Freeman Year-Round Pre-K is June 9th, 2021. And finally, the traditional Pre-K calendar. The first day of instruction is, let's see, I believe, somewhere here, it would be August, it's not listed, August 19th? Is it? August 31st, I'm sorry. The last day will be May 26th, and again, we have the same five remote learning days as the traditional calendar for our Pre-K students, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Are there any other questions about the Calendar Committee's recommendations? I'd be happy to answer them. If there's something more technical, I'm sure Dr. Smith can handle it. I'm just here because of my mask. I, I guess, I think I missed-
I, I guess, I think I missed it. The SNIPs, when are they going, what calendar are they aligned with?
SNIPs is on the Restart Calendar. So SNIPs and Freeman are our restart schools.
Okay, got you.
Nelson, I'd just like to say I appreciate your work on this. I know you worked a lot on the Calendar Committee back before December. I know you talked to a lot of people. I'm sure you all have worked recently on it too. So certainly appreciate all your work that you put in on this.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Wharton. I enjoyed it.
I agree.
In fact, everybody on that committee, they have done a, have been really working, that way. Thank all of them.
Well, I would like to thank, I would like to thank the committee as a whole. I'd like to thank Dr. Smith. She said to me earlier that this iteration of the Calendar Committee was by far the most engaging. We got so much feedback from the public. And I think that's definitely true, and it's a credit to you, Dr. Smith. It's a credit to Dr. Burns. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Bernice Johnson, the PTA President in New Hanover County. She did a great job. I'm a bit of a calendar junkie because, you know, the purpose of the calendar is to look forward. And I think everybody sort of needs to do that. The idea of a post-pandemic calendar is just kind of exciting. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. I did forget to make a recommendation the committee wanted to pass on. I would, and I don't think this requires a separate vote, but I would like to have the superintendent given the authority to make changes to this calendar in the event there's something like inclement weather. There's always, you know, an ice storm or, you know, just a day of insane rain, like the last six we've had. And it sometimes, you know, is detrimental to our system to have to wait for our special board meeting, our annual board meeting, to go ahead and make the changes necessary. So if we give that authority to the superintendent, and Ms. Stadner, you can correct me if there's a problem, but it would, I think it would be a benefit.
I would suggest that the calendar adoption be done as one motion, and then by a separate motion and vote to grant the superintendent authority. And I would just recommend including that notice be given to the board at that, you know, at that time the superintendent makes a change, so that the board could take it up if need be.
Okay. So, Madam Chair. Those are my recommendations.
So is there, so Ms. Stadner, so the motion would be from the Calendar Committee or from Mr. Buller? Is that how we are doing it, for all the calendars to be adopted?
I believe that's the recommendation, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Buller, are you making the motion?
I would move that the board adopt the calendars, yes ma'am.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mr. Buller to adopt all the calendars as presented. Is there a second?
Stephanie Adams, second.
All right, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, listen.
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg? Mr. Rivenberg?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm still waiting for Mr. Rivenberg.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Seven, nothing. All right, second, there's a recommendation from the Calendar Committee to grant authority to the superintendent to revise current and future calendars as needed in response to closings due to inclement weather, emergencies, and acts of God. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Mr. Buller made the motion.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Justice, second.
Ms. Justice, please identify yourself when you make the motion.
I did, must not have been caught. Judy Justice, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Go ahead.
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, nothing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buller.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great work by the committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Item 11, new business. Item A, interim budget resolution. Ms. Small?
Thank you very much. I request the board approve this resolution to allow the superintendent, or to empower the superintendent to allocate, encumber, and spend from all funds those necessary expenses for the operation of the school system. Expenditures shall not exceed the prior year budget. And this resolution would take effect July 1st, 2020, and continue until formal budget adoption, which is scheduled for July 7th.
All right, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the interim budget resolution?
Motion to adopt.
From?
Bill Rivenberg.
All right, thank you.
Nelson Bullier, second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice? Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
All right, motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Small. And you're up next. Installment pay process change.
Thank you. Just a little background information about this. As part of the school business modernization process, DPI is phasing out the current installment process across the state, but they're going to start with the systems that are piloting, the new software. And so I need your approval of this new process, but I'm going to try to describe it just a little bit to you. So installment pay is where 10-month employees pay is spread over 12 months. And it's optional for traditional employees, but it is required for year-round by state law. And so the new process really is managed at the local level rather than at the state level. And it has a lot of advantages for employees. One is that the employee can choose the amount of pay for their installment pay or their summer pay. So that gives them more control. It will have, so it'll be after tax, and it'll be after. So all the insurance deductions, everything will be made over the 10 months. And so the amounts they choose will be the exact amounts that are paid in the summer. Let's see, the employees, one of the drawbacks of the current system is if an employee starts in the second week of school, they're not allowed to participate. But under this new system, they would be allowed to participate if they start later in the year. And then they could also, you know, once we get on the new system in January, they'd be able to change their amounts if they decided to add more or adjust it during the year. So we think there's a lot of benefits to this, and we're excited about, you know, the, it sort of simplifies the process. It takes the state out of the mix, and the money will be held in a non-interest-bearing account. We will still certainly encourage employees, and it's even listed here too, that we also will continue to offer the summer cash program through the state credit union, which allows them to earn interest on their own money. So they have more control of that. That's in their bank. This one would be in a non-interest-bearing account. So that is sort of a summary of the new process. And I request the board's approval for us to begin July 1, because even though we're not going on the new payroll system until January, we have to have a uniform installment process for the fiscal year.
You have heard the recommendation from Ms. Small. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Nelson Bullier.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from, first person to say their name wins.
Bill Rivenberg.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Adams?
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
Item C, year-end budget amendment res, oh god, I can't get this out. Sorry. Excuse me. Year-end budget amendment resolution. Item C, Ms. Small?
One more, short resolution.
Thank you.
Requesting the board's approval, as we do every year. The state continues to amend the budget, you know, up to and subsequent to sometimes the end of the school year. And so I'm requesting your approval to approve the budget amendments for changes through June 30, to balance budget to actual expenditures for state position allotments and the non-allotted line items, and to transfer state and local funds as needed to maximize state funding.
You've heard the recommendation from Ms. Small. Is there a motion to accept the year-end budget amendment resolution?
Move to adopt, Nelson Bullier.
Is there a second?
Second. Second, Jeanette Nichols.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Adams?
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice? Ms. Justice?
We can't hear you.
Will come back. Ms. Jeanette Nichols? Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Seven, nothing. Thank you. Item D, change order to CMAR agreement for recovering of roof at Noble Middle School. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I'm asking the board's approval of change order number seven to Mont Keith Construction Corporation in the amount of $565,611.06. This change order will add additional roof recovering for sections A1 through A10, A15, and A16. It'll add that to the project scope of work to be completed over this upcoming summer. And I guess it's the current summer. The scope of work is consistent with the budget transfer that was approved by the board back in February 2020. And the cost of the change order is within that budget.
All right, you've heard the recommendation from Mr. Anderson. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Nelson Bullier.
Is there a second?
Second, Judy Justice.
All right, any discussion?
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
And Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E, network security enterprise licensing agreement. Ms. Brinson?
Thank you. Request the board approve the five-year enterprise licensing agreement for network security licenses. This would cover our firewall, our any-connect licenses, which allow users to connect to the network from outside, which have been very important these last few months. The licenses for filtering on devices, both on and off the networks, all the devices the kids have checked out. Identity and access control management for users and devices, and then authentication for Cisco devices. By doing a five-year agreement, we will save approximately $12,125.83 a year over the course of that five years.
And this covers the, for the entire school system, correct?
Correct.
Seems like a pretty good deal. All right, you have heard the recommendation from Ms. Brinson. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Nelson Bullier. Is there a second?
Second, Jeanette Nichols.
Any discussion? Adams?
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Brinson. Item F, Waste and Recycling Removal Service Contract. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're asking for the board's approval of the service contract with Select Recycling Waste Services Incorporated in the amount of $334,590 for waste and recycling removal services for the 2020-21 fiscal year. This contract does provide solid waste and recycling services for all schools and administrative facilities. The term of the contract is from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. The contract does have an option of renewal for three additional years. Would ask for the board's approval.
Move to approve, Nelson Bullier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Any discussion? Is this a new contractor for us?
This is, excuse me. The old contract, we can only renew for the three years, and we had reached the term of that contract. So we rebid this service this year.
But we've never used Select Recycling?
They're a new vendor. But they are, the people that are running that company, we have some experience with when they were working with other companies.
Any other discussion?
Lisa Eastepp?
Who is Select Recycling? I've never heard of them.
They're a brand-new company in Wilmington. You may know that.
They buy somebody up?
Well, Waste Industries bought out Pink Trash, and there were some folks from Pink Trash that at that point went into business for themselves, forming Select Recycling Waste Services. So I say, we have, we have experience working with these individuals, even though it is a new company in Wilmington.
So Select Recycling is the old Pink Trash?
Well, some of the individuals that we dealt with started this company. I can't say that it's the exact same company, but some of the individuals that we worked with while it was Pink Trash started this company.
Okay.
Lisa Eastepp?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice? Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
I'm assuming my name was called "I"?
Bill Rivenberg?
You call Bill Rivenberg?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Eddie, this has nothing to do with you, but I've got a history with Pink Trash. I don't care anything about that crowd, so I'm going to say "Nah".
I don't like their trash cans.
No, it don't have anything to do with trash cans.
Nothing to do with trash cans, I just don't like them.
Six, one vote, motion passes. Six, uh, six one vote, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, policy waivers. Dr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Instruction is requesting a waiver of the following policies. Policy 7440, student promotion and accountability. Policy 8502, eligibility for interscholastic athletics, extra and curricular activities. Policy 7413, report cards. And Policy 7410, grading systems. Regarding Policy 7440, a waiver is requested for the portion of the policy that identifies the number of required credit hours for graduation and the number of paid employment hours for students enrolled in the occupational course of study. Regarding Policy 8502, a waiver is requested for the portion of the policy that relates to high school student athletic eligibility. This request is in alignment with the recommendation of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Regarding Policy 7413, a waiver is requested for the portion of the policy that requires 20% of a student's grade include final exams and end-of-course exam grades. Additionally, there is a request to waive performance codes, checklist codes, grading scales, and citizenship codes for students. Regarding Policy 7410, a waiver is requested regarding school requirements to implement a plan for credit recovery and students' ability to engage in credit recovery without having taken required end-of-course exams or having attended 50% of regular scheduled class periods and a minimum grade average of 40%. Your approval tonight would allow the district to remain in alignment with changes that have already occurred at the State Board of Education level.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the policy waivers?
Judy Justice, motion to approve?
Thank you, is there a second?
Nelson Bollier, second.
Any discussion?
I didn't understand anything she just said, but I'm gonna go ahead and vote for it.
Just briefly, Dr. Smith, I know this is a little bit off-topic, but now that we have you up there and we're talking about waiving policies and it's graduation season, can, can you just give a quick description to the board of what you came up with as a way to honor some of our foreign exchange students for senior? I think it's pretty cool, but just want everyone to be aware, aware of it.
Well, yes, sir.
I'm worried I put you on the spot.
Well, thank you. Yes, sir. Essentially, we wanted to make sure that we were honoring those students just as we would our high school graduates. And so, we are including them in their graduation ceremonies. And of course, recognize this year that graduation ceremonies look quite different than they have historically in the, in the past. And so, those students are being recognized along with their classmates. Each high school may be doing it slightly different, but we are allowing those students to participate in those commencement exercises along with all of our other students as well.
And I think in the future, because if it's my understanding, some of those foreign student students may not qualify to actually graduate, but y'all are gonna give them a flag or something like that, just as a way of appreciation or something like that?
Yes, sir. We're going to list them in the bulletin for all high school graduates. We're going to call them forward, and we're going to recognize them as well. They, of course, will not be graduating from our high schools, but they've, you know, met our requirements in terms of the time that they've been here, and we think it's a small thing that we can do to honor the commitment that they've made. And the fact, and also to even to some degree acknowledge the fact that they may not be able to graduate from their traditional home or their traditional schools.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Where were we?
I would just discussion, Tom Bremer.
All right, any other discussion? All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
All right, seven, nothing vote. Motion passes. Item H, UNCW signed agreements for expenses and services and MOU.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. As you all know, but I will share this information just for those who may be viewing who are not as familiar with Isaac Bear. But Isaac Bear High School is considered a cooperative, innovative high school by the state of North Carolina, and is situated adjacent to the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. Students attending Isaac Bear have the unique opportunity to participate in accelerated curriculum, allowing them to earn their required high school credits in two years through a compacted course schedule. Isaac Bear High School students are given the opportunity to begin college courses during their junior year, allowing them to earn college credits toward their undergraduate degree. And I'll stop here and just make a special notation. If you remember the young lady that presented to us at our last board meeting from Isaac Bear, she's going to be entering UNCW as a senior this year as a result of the credits that she earned while at Isaac Bear. I thought that was definitely worth taking the time to, to note. So, huge shout-out to Peyton. This partnership, okay, excuse me. Isaac Bear students do not incur costs for their college classes while students are at Isaac Bear Early College. This partnership between UNCW and Isaac Bear began in 2006, and hundreds of students have benefited from this partnership during this time. Contained in the term, in the, in the item, are three agreements. The agreements outline services provided by both the district and the university, costs covered by the district, and a memorandum of understanding or agreement between the college and New Hanover County Schools. A request to your approval of all three agreements so that we can continue this successful partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Is there a motion to approve the MOU, the agreements for expenses and services?
Move for approval, Nelson Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I would just like to say thanks to the university and the board trustees and all of it, because they, you know, we're really developing a strong partnership, and I'm just appreciative for their support of that school. So, thank you.
I would second that.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item I, memorandum of understanding UNC Charlotte. Dr. Burns?
Yes, members of the board. Madam Chair, you have before you a memorandum of agreement so that New Hanover County Schools staff can provide classroom or related service supervision for student interns and participants' experiences. This is with the University of North Carolina at Charlotte for the upcoming school year, and there are several of those that are presented to you. We'll take them one at the time.
All right, is there a motion to approve the MOU with UNC Charlotte?
Move to approve, Nelson Bollier.
Is there a second?
Jeanette Nichols.
Any discussion? Ms. Adams?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, nothing. Item two, MOU with UNC Pembroke?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is the same agreement with a different institution, UNC Pembroke, for the placement of student interns and participants for the upcoming school year. I did not add before, and I will add now, that each of these MOUs have been reviewed by your board attorney.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the MOU with UNC Pembroke?
Move to approve, Nelson Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Real, just real briefly, does, do the schools reach out to us, or do we reach out to the schools for these MOUs?
These are longstanding agreements that the district has had, and I'm not sure originally how they were initiated, Mr. Wortman.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, nothing. Item three, MOU with University of Mount Olive.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is the MOU to allow for placement of student interns and participants, the agreements between New Hanover County Schools and the University of Mount Olive for the upcoming school year.
Is there a motion to approve the MOU with University of Mount Olive?
Move for approval, Nelson Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Adams?
Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, nothing. Item four, MOU with West, uh, Western Governors University.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, this final agreement between New Hanover County Schools and Western Governors University is again for the placement of student interns and participants for the upcoming school year.
Is there a motion to approve item four, MOU with Western Governors University?
Move for approval?
Move, Judy Justice?
Second, Nelson Bollier.
Any discussion?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, nothing. Thank you, Dr. Burns. Moving on to item J, insurance renewal. Ms. Mall?
Thank you. I would like to recommend policy renewal with Liberty Mutual for general liability, automobile, workers' compensation umbrella, and then adding a new violent event response coverage. This is totals $769,164. It is an increase over last year, but it was budgeted because we expected a cost increase this year.
How close were we to what we thought it was gonna be?
It, it was, it was really close. Some, some went up, a couple went, did not increase quite as much as we thought. But, but we'll still probably need that for, you know, our, our workers' comp claim. So, I, I think we're right in line with what we budgeted.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the items presented?
Move for approval, Nelson Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second, Bill Reivenberg.
Any discussion?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Reivenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, seven, nothing. Thank you. Item K, I'm not sure what to call it, athletic plan, something?
I guess we've already had discussion. I guess I, I guess I can make a motion to ask the superintendent to come up with a safe plan in order to help facilitate our students get back to athletics. I would ask that he do that by the end of the week.
I, well, I, I think, go ahead.
Mr. Wortman, if I could make a suggestion? I understand about the plan. It would be helpful if you addressed a date certain for the resumption of athletic practices in terms of how we would address this as staff.
Well, Dr. Burns, I think, sorry, sorry, I think, my intent was for the board to consider a safe plan to get our kids back on the field and not wait, continue to wait for further guidance. I'm not trying to say, let's get them back on the field tomorrow. I'm asking for you or your staff to come up with a plan using the guidance that we have right now from the governor and from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, to come up, to develop a plan for the kids to come back on, on the fields.
Yes, sir. Yes, I understand that. So, we can develop a plan. There are plans that are drafted. I don't think that's gonna be difficult to do. I think the question that I'm struggling with is on which date? It could be whatever date the board chooses, with the exception of the dead period, June 29th through July 5th. So, potentially, it could be a date this week or next week. However, from June 29th through Ju- July 5th, there can be no practice, so the next date would be July 6th.
Understand. I, I, I understand what you're saying. So, I guess my motion would be?
Well, I would, I would like to discuss more. You said there was no discussion, but I think, I would like?
Sorry, I thought I, yeah, go ahead.
Can you just start jumping right into, we had a discussion. I have been thinking about this.
Before we, before we continue the discussion, how about we, we actually have a motion in a second? Otherwise, there's no point in the discussion.
Oh, what, what was the date, Mr. Wortman?
We, we haven't come up with the date yet.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to allow the safe resumption of students for athletics, consistent with the governor's guidance and the New Hanover County Athletic Association's guidance, oh, sorry, the North Carolina Athletic Association's guidance for resumption of athletics on Monday, June 22nd.
The motion, please also state your name.
David Wortman.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, bye.
Bill Reivenberg.
All right, there's a motion in a second? Now, discussion?
As I said, I have been thinking about that. Dr. Burns, you said that the governor is most likely gonna be coming out with a statement on Monday? Or that's what you, or understand?
Yes, ma'am. The understanding is that there will be a press conference Monday, at which time the governor will indicate whether we remain, what's presumed, whether we remain in Phase Two, or we move to lesser restrictions, Phase Three.
I, I would like to see us wait until after his statement, just to get a feel of what it is that the whole state, you know, he could, things could change immediately. I would like to know for sure what the latest is, and since that's so close, they could come up with the plan, and then we could do the day after. Depending, I mean, depending on what Dr. Burns, what, what the governor says, I mean?
Judy, the governor's, just to be very clear, I think, being a little confusing about a statement from Phase Two to Phase Three. The governor has already said that courts are allowed to resume with no more than 20 people on a field and no more than 20 spectators. Now, a field's a baseball field, a football field. With what we have in our facilities, we- we, and, and North Carolina High School Athletic Association has also said, no balls, no bats, no swinging. It's basically getting out there and working out. They've, they've also said that you can do that starting June 15th. So, what I'm saying is, is let's develop something. If you want to do them more than, let's do them 15 feet apart. We can provide a safe space for our students to work out, one, two, get outside and do, you know, be constructive with, with one coach. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for anything. You know, I'm looking for, for the board's guidance as well, and additional safety measures that they may, they may believe. But, we know that the beaches are open, the parks are open, the basketball courts, as Mr. Bollier said, the tennis courts are open. I think that we should be able to come up with something that's safe, that allows our, our students to get on the field and, and run around for a little bit.
I, I did a yay vote for, to put this on the agenda, because I would just like to see the plans. I know, Dr. Burns, you've mentioned that they're already out there, and that the athletic directors have been discussing it. I, you know, I think it's really going to be dependent on, I mean, today, you know, an article went out, we're 220% higher of COVID cases than we were on the go, right? And so, I think, I, I agree with what David's saying about based on, it's confusing, because there's so much guidance coming in, and some things are allowable, some things are not. And so, I can understand why the public is confused, and I think you make a really great point, that our kids need each other, and if they can do it safely, and we're, we're seeing that, then, then maybe it's something worth looking at. But, I still default to what is the risk right now, and it continues to go up, and if that's continuing, I, I, I would think that when Monday's announcement comes, I mean, who knows where we're going to be. And so, I, I, I'm interested to see the plans, but I am, I was very back and forth on this, because I'm hesitant to say, let's go ahead and, and give them that opportunity to do that, when things just seem to be exploding around us. But, I'm, I'm interested to see the plans, and to see what the schools could come up with.
I'm just, let me just say, I, I said this again, I said this before, but I'm very uncomfortable, in this instance, substituting our judgment for the judgment of the ADs of Al O'Brien, who's in charge of athletics, and of the superintendent, who, they've been working on these plans. And so, then we're going to come in and swoop in and say, we're setting a date of arbitrarily, you know, June 22nd. That just, that, that's foolish. So, allow the people who are working on the plans, who have been working on the plans, who are working on the plans to reopen the schools, who have been working on the plans for the summer learning, let, let them do their jobs.
So, I, I didn't want to belabor this point anymore, but the fact of the matter is, is the athletic directors have been working on this plan and, and are ready to do it. I, I think their frustration is, is we continue to say, we'll wait, we'll wait, we'll delay, we'll delay, and see what's, what's happening. They're looking for guidance from people, because I, I don't, you know, you've heard what Dr. Burns says, let's wait to see what Governor Cooper says. Well, he's already, he's already talked. He's already told us that we can open up, up fields. Well, let's, let's wait, you know, to see what other counties do. We're not worried about other counties, I'm worried about the Hanover County. That, that's who we represent. I understand there's a safety concern, 100%. Now, I think it's lessened, because we're outside, and if we appropriately space the kids without touching and doing that, we, we really, you know, lower that, that potential of contracting, tracking COVID as, for what we know. It's just a place for them, for them to be outside and to be safe. If we have to do it 20 feet apart, I'm good with that. If we have to do it 30 feet apart, I'm good with that. It's actually getting them outside and doing something. You know, we can, go ahead, Stephanie, sorry.
I mean, I, I guess you said a good point there, too. Like, I'm looking at the calendar, right? Let's say that even that decision were to be made, it's only one week difference, because the dead, the dead, the dead zone starts on the 29th. So, really, what is that five days going to accomplish? I, I'm, I'm waffling back and forth on this, because I'm, I'm feeling very conflicted.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying, Stephanie.
Yeah.
The problem is, is Dr. Burns and his staff knew about this coming out at least a week ago, and it happened yesterday, when we could do this. So, now we're at the point that we're going to wait even longer. And I think that's the frustration, that no one's, no one's actually giving them the guidance. They're using the excuse of, let's see if we go up to phase three. We already know what we can do now. I understand the statistics, and again, Judy, I don't want to argue statistics, because I don't think that's fruitful. I think we all agree that COVID is a bad disease, and we all want it to get better. I think that's, that's pretty, pretty clear. But, I also think that from a perspective of our students, we can provide an area for them to exercise, for them to be outside, under some, some semblance of instruction, and still be safe. And that, and I know it, we're talking about maybe a, a week, but in reality, we're not really talking a week, because we don't know what's going to happen after we come out of the dead period. So, that, that.
Let's wait, well, wait, I mean, I.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, we don't know if, if our administration is going to be ready to do something coming out of the dead period, and then.
I trust, I trust our administration.
You don't know that they're not.
I think they're very responsible.
I do, too, and I, and I, I think the athletic directors have been, have been pretty clear that they want this to happen.
Well, they've been clear only to you, then, David, because I certainly haven't been hearing that.
I haven't either.
And that was my, if, if, Dr. Burns, if I can direct that question to you, you know, you mentioned earlier that you have heard diverse options and discussions on this. If you had to put a percentage to it, between athletic directors and, and others that are weighing in on this discussion, what percentage is supportive, hoping earlier, what percentage is supportive of reading until July 7th?
What happened? We froze?
He's thinking.
Oh, okay.
Or counting.
Freeze, and I just wasn't sure.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
Are, are you thinking?
No, you, I'm sorry, you asked me the question? I misunderstood, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, because you said, you said.
I can't speak for others. I have heard that there are some who are uncomfortable. I cannot give you a percentage. I do not know. But, I, I am told that not everyone is comfortable starting very soon. Dr. Smith has some information.
I can speak to an email that I was copied in, and it was from our lead athletic trainer, and he indicated in his statement that he believed that it would be unwise for the district to begin on the 22nd. He did offer that this was not necessarily representative of all the other athletic trainers in the district, but this is what he personally believed, and it was driven by the increase in hospitalizations and positive cases within our community. But, he is, he is our lead athletic trainer for the district.
Thank you.
Which, which school is he at, LaShaw?
I would have to look, but I want to, I, I don't, I, let me look real quick, and I'll tell you.
You know, the, the fact, it wasn't yesterday, 33 new cases? We don't know what it's going to look like by the 22nd. If you're just talking about five days, and we as a board could get clearer information, both from the athletic directors, their take, and also what's going to happen in those next five days, that would, that would help me feel much more comfortable. I, I said, I want the kids out, I want them in the fresh air. There's less of a chance, but there's also the factor, already told you, even one person has to go through what my family's gone through. I would say absolutely not.
I guess I'm a little confused as to the 6/22 date, since I just proposed it, so I assume that they just received this email saying no for 6/22?
Rumor that he's responding to, there's so many of those out there.
Okay, because, yeah, I'd never heard of, I, I randomly made up 6/22. I don't know where that date came from.
Rumors everywhere, always.
Yeah, that's fine. No, and I, and again, I, I know that I forwarded the ADs proposals to, to Dr. Burns and Mr. O'Brien on, on June 2nd, so I think that's what, you know, it's two weeks, and we haven't done anything. So, I think they're just looking for a decision to be made.
Dr. Smith?
That gentleman is at New Hanover High School.
Thank you.
And did he just, did he just send that email, or how did, how did he come up with that 6/22 date?
Mr. Wortman, there was some discussion, as I understand it, about potential start dates, one being July 6th, the other being June 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For a week's worth of safety, with the numbers have gone up. I know I sound like a broken record, but I've been in shock. I really have. I didn't expect this, the last week to increase. It's gone up, I think, over 100 in a week. Wait, it took us like two months to get there.
And, and again, I don't want to talk about the statistics, but we certainly can, if you'd like. You know, with the increased testing, with whereas there's positive tests, those results aren't showing if there's any actual symptoms, versus symptomatic and asymptomatic. We can have those discussions, if you'd like. I've chosen to kind of stay away from those, but I think there's a lot of correlation with those, those positive tests with increased testing as well.
I, I think that, I, I think coming into this discussion, I was under the impression that there was a, across the board, this is what the athletic departments wanted to push for, and, and based on what Dr. Smith just said, and I know that's only representative of one person, but it is someone showing concern, that they don't feel that it is safe. And so, I, I think that I would default to saying, let's wait and see, and wait till after the July 4th holiday.
And I, I, I will say, and I won't say anything else, I promise y'all that I will shut up. When we had Joe Miller as a athletic director, or Scott Raswell, some of the, some of the great athletic directors we've had in New Hanover County, I would believe exactly what they said, when they started to snagging vice principals and saying, you're going to be the athletic director, I, I, I lost a little bit of science in that, and I'm sorry. But, I won't say anything else.
If there's no further discussion, Ms. Adams?
Lisa Eastep?
No.
David Wortman?
Yes.
Stephanie Adams?
No.
Nelson Bollier?
No.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Justice?
No.
Jeanette Nichols?
No.
Bill Rivenberg?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we have five nos, two yeses.
Thank you.
I, I, I would say, Dr. Burns, now, I'm hopeful that even though we're not going to do that, two weeks ago, I forwarded you all this information, and I have not heard a word from you about it since. I, I certainly hope that we just don't sit there and wait for the governor to tell us what to do. Let's come up with a plan. If the governor says we're ready to go, which I think he's already said we're ready to go, let's be prepared to institute the plan, instead of waiting for the governor to do it, and then doing that. I think, if, if we're really interested in helping the students, I think that's the most important thing, that we at least are ready to act when we're told that we can't act.
Mr. Wortman, please know that I took the information you provided seriously and have attended to it. It's not that I am not willing to make a decision, it's that I'm taking out of an abundance of caution, the time necessary. Once we have information regarding the state and the next phase, a decision will be made.
I look forward to hearing you from me about it.
And David, thank you for this discussion. It has been valuable. I think we're all doing the best we can under these really unusual circumstances.
No, and I agree, Judy, but my intent is, is we've started that discussion, so whereas we may not agree, I, I understand about when we should start, we at least have that discussion. Again, I said this two weeks ago, and hadn't heard a word about it, so I was worried, and, and I know that it was actually put on the back burner, so I'm just glad that we had the discussion. I, I appreciate you and Stephanie's in, insight about it. It, it's important to get that discussion started.
Mr. Wortman, if I might add, as I said previously, I have taken your information very seriously, and I brought it up as part of my report this evening, in order to be transparent and share with the board where we are as a district. So, I, I too appreciate the discussion, I think it's very helpful.
Item 12, correspondence. Does any board member have any correspondence they want to share?
Just, just a brief, but important congratulations to all of our seniors.
Absolutely.
I'm so proud of them, so.
And I would like to say that, this is from Dr. Smith. I've been watching the graduations the last two days, and I'm getting this afternoon, since I've been here, but it's turned out in so many ways, very, very satisfying for those involved, and it's been a lot of hard work, and I really appreciate all that. It's, it's, it's been really good for the kids, although unusual.
Item 13, announcements. We have several meetings coming up. Special meeting on Tuesday, June 23rd, at 8:00 a.m. at the Board of Ed Center. The only item on the agenda is a closed session for student assignment appeals. We have a regular meeting on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, at 5:30 at the Board of Ed Center. Policy committee meeting on Tuesday, July 14th, at 9:00 a.m. here at the Board of Ed Center. We have a special meeting on Saturday, June 27th, beginning at 8:45 p.m. That is a remote meeting. We have a special meeting on Monday, June 29th, beginning at 12:45 p.m. That is also remote, virtual meeting. Ms. Dagnor, do I need to announce anything about those meetings? They are, that they are closed session? That's the only item on the agenda?
The, the purpose of this special meeting needs to be noticed in, in at least 48 hours ahead of the meeting. So, it looks like you've got on here, the only item is closed session to discuss personnel matters. So, that's, that's sufficient notice of the purpose of meetings.
Okay, all right, and, and one more special meeting on Tuesday, June 30th, beginning at 12:45. The only item on, on the special meeting agendas will be a closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A1, A6, and General Statutes 14, General Statute 115C-319. The closed session portion of each meeting will be conducted via a secure online video conference. And also as a reminder, as of now, the attendance at all open meetings will be strictly limited to no more than 10 people, which is recommended by the CDC. The general public will have the option to view, view remotely via live streaming on YouTube at NHCS YouTube. We do not need a closed session, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Nelson Bollier.
Is there a second?
Second.
From?
Bill Rivenberg.
Thank you.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bollier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
Passes seven, nothing. Thank you, everyone.